Okay folks, we'll make a start, the recording has started. It is, what is it, Tuesday the 19th of March at 6 o'clock. Welcome to Finance and Personnel. A bit of usable chairs. I like you sat there David, because I can tell you off easy. Yeah, I can reach him. Right. 755, does everybody have any declarations of disposable pecuniary interests? None. 756, do you have any apologies for absence?
Any apologies I have received since from Council, Brenton.
Thank you. 757, minutes from our last meeting on the 27th of February. Are you content that they are a true record? 20th of February, received by four counts on the 27th of February. Happy?
Yep.
758, contracts update to note the attached schedule of contracts. We actually have some now, which is good. As these packs get bigger, Alan, I struggle to find the right area. That's the problem. There's a benefit of having smaller. No, tell me. Right, anything Alan you want to add to the four that are on there?
The one that was approved that planning the Guildhall clock tower is.
Yeah. So we've got the current contract with Guildhall scaffolding, the HR performance management review, the replacement of the boiler in the Guildhall and the Guildhall clock tower repairs. Part of the press approved of planning recently. Any questions on any of those contracts? No. Could we add a column for date approved? I know you've got the minute reference there and we can check back, but I think it would be quite helpful to have the date approved. When I was reading this. And the other question I had was the replacement for the boiler. Where are we at with the replacement of the boiler in the Guildhall?
If you go past Downcave Lane, you'll see that there's some earthworks outside that army that is for the new gas supply to be put in. And the boiler's order, so as soon as the gas supply is in, they'll be there. I'm being told it's about two to three weeks.
Okay.
I was told it started at the beginning of this week.
Lovely. I was slightly nervous because we gave, well, we awarded that contract on the basis of a estimate for the delivery time. And you know, that factored into our approval and I was not wanting to let it drag too long because why would we make the decision we did if it then took ages? We could have gone with somebody else. But it's underway, then I'm happy. 759, approval of payments. The usual list of payments detailed in your pack. Anything, Alan, to add to the list that was circulated? Everyone happy with the payments that are there? Well, you made them all, so you must be happy. Chief authoriser. Then do you need a proposal and second of all to approve the payments? Could I have a proposal to accept the payments, David? And a second, Doug? All agreed?
Yep.
Thank you. Personnel report. We're receiving just that's the personnel report, which was circulated in advance. I see there's been some training courses booked up for April for the staff, fire marshal first day, that sort of thing. Which is good.
And we also give you training for the new staff that we will recruit. So we combine that with the existing stock change, so we don't have to do a few separate sessions. We can actually have it as part of the induction process.
Brilliant. And we've got a note there about planning training coming up.
Been a lot of silence from Breckland council side, so I have emailed them two or three times to just follow. They wanted to have a briefing session with me first to fully understand what the requirements were. And there seems to be a difficulty in organising, but I filed an email very recently.
Okay. If you've not had a response by Friday, could you let a couple of us know because we're going to Breckland for a local plan briefing? So the relevant officers will all be there and one of us could raise that for you. And the planning expertise, could you just outline what's been agreed there with Mark Webster in relation to planning? I think that'd be beneficial.
So I put together a chance before the meeting, because I was on leave. The day I arrived, because any days that I confirmed that he was actually available and was going to come. So Mark Webster used to be part of our staff establishment. He used to run the planning process. And the feedback that I got from councils was that they actually quite enjoyed it. He was able to do a little more dimension because he would actually speak to the Breckland planning officers before he would have a look at the plans, et cetera. So I had a negotiation with Mark. He's, I pay him a retainer and he will be available to do that. He, I send him all the information, he analyses it, I put it together in the pack. He adds a summary and he's more than happy to be available to discuss and he can add a lot more depth. I have felt so embarrassed running the planning committees in the last few meetings. I've really cringed and I'd ask you, I've really done myself a great part. And I've probably spent more time preparing for that meeting than I have in the other meetings. So it's, in my opinion, it's money well spent. And Marcus, you know, he's, just to give you an example, he's actually on leave for the next planning meeting and he's going to actually download it. So I'm going to use one of these screens and actually have him on call and he'll actually do his presentation, send it to me and do it from his hotel room. So he's really is, you know, mind standing and just dealing with him. He will add depth to the planning processes. Yeah.
Yeah, I thought it worked really well. Well done.
Just need to pay the implications, you know, when he's with.
I mean, I just want to comment on that because obviously I always hear you tell it before. So Mark was here all along and telling us his planning. I think Marcus could value when it comes to, he knows the stuff in and out. He knows the details, able to add, to give a bar view and put in these simple terms that even somebody who's not acquainted with time and can't understand. And give us a really good view of what's at stake, what's to be approved and what's our limitations. And no one tries to fit the blind, those boxes we struggle with. He kind of gives us the box and tells us where you can put in that box. That's why you have to work with. Mark, I think, was a great value and I think it was missing. For him to come back, I think it's excellent.
Planning's never worked as well, other than when he was here. It's the best. Still improvements, but.
It's still knowledgeable, very knowledgeable, yes.
So hopefully we can take advantage of that and beef up our planning responses. The next one on the list there, Alan, is the advertising for the two, not two, but the new positions that we've got. And they closed this week.
It comes.
14.
14.
Yep.
All the applications of my desk, I just wanted to go through the HR consultancy tonight because they had said to me, this is a public meeting, but they just said, just, you know, get some feedback from the councils in terms of upstairs. So tomorrow morning I will have a meeting with Nick and we'll start running through and screening them. And then we'll get a list and see if we can organise interviews sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
We had a big issue as our trade up to the weekend. One of our staff members picked up that they were actually in a shocking state. So we had a review meeting with the contractor and I think they realised that the writings on the wall. I think they'd lost the big contract that they had, which we were, they were feeding our contract with that contract. And they just, you know, all they could do is apologise. Which doesn't help us.
No. Do you have any indication of how many applicants there were?
I believe we could be looking at about 50.
Happy to learn.
Is that for just the two counting positions?
And the, there's a fellow leader, that's what we call the media officer and the two.
They're all the same SCP scale, aren't they? So very similar roles. Good, well hopefully amongst that number, you've got some decent candidates. That's encouraging that there's that many, that's a good choice, hopefully.
The concern there is that they've just been bunted on from the job sector.
Yeah. Made to apply.
Yeah.
Well, find out.
Probably sift them out quite quickly.
Okay, any other questions from the personnel report? No? No way, thank you. 761, logging and reporting of complaints, there are none.
Surprisingly there are.
We can write something.
The rule of heads is that I'm going to be forwarded to the stairs.
You're in good company. 762, financial report for the 11 months ended the 29th of February. That is in your pack. What are the, I do enjoy your narrative about at the front of these reports, I've only really used them.
I think the narrative, as the year goes on, the narrative kind of is become very repetitive. You know, we've got problems in our venues of markets from an income perspective. There was over budgeting there. Our savings income is down, which is just due to the mix. For the last two years, we haven't actually hit the target normally. You know, we have to turn people away from being buried in the department, have to do that. Our other income is up because we book costs for projects. And surprisingly, our property income is up. You know, we've still got two unfilled units of shambles. So that's been quite surprising. On the finance and personnel perspective, we've got significant savings there. From an expenditure perspective, a lot of that is salaries. We've changed the way that we budget, so hopefully we won't have that. So the other part of that saving is when we did the budget for finance and personnel, electricity, gas, oil prices were at the highs, it was in November 2022. So we have huge savings in those particular areas, so just the three areas of that. Unfortunately, our trade, we've signed a new contract with Breckland council for our trade waste, waste disposal. But we are generating so many skips at the moment that the savings that we're having from doing that, we're actually losing because we're paying huge amounts to have our skips emptied. So we're doing an investigation into that. We go into the markets, there's no way that we just go to one supplier and say, please drop off a skip. But one of the issues that we have to do is we have to think about our allotments because that's where a lot of the waste has been generated as we clear allotments. We have to do that. When we get, just aside, when we get, we're going out and getting contractors to clear allotment sites, their biggest cost is waste disposal, it's just getting rid of it. So we're having a rethink of that. I've issued instruction that I want to see a quote, competitive quote for every single skip that gets used. And we need to just make sure we're aware of what we're actually putting into it. Whether we can compile some of the stuff ourselves, you know, we need to have a look at. Venues of markets is over expenditure. That's where it repairs maintenance. I think some projects, I detect that the budget wasn't there. Because you'd expect, it's income being lower, that you'd expect the expenditure to be lower because it's a commercial type organisation. And amenities is lower, we've had, we budgeted an extra £19,000 worth of cost because of the land area that we've done, we've caught a backlog on Barnacross Common. And we discovered that our contractor had done work and had an invoice that's going back. So we've got about £21,000 of invoices that we've processed in the last month. They've all been verified, all been signed off, but they actually just were delayed and doing the extra work. So they've been, it's not their contractual work, that's been bought to them in a month. But it's all the scrapes and the work that they've been doing on Barnacross Common and those costs have come through. And then our other expenditure relates to the projects. We've earned grant income and project income and those are the costs related to that. We're not ripping off people, just for the record, because there's timing costs, we recur higher cost margin, low income. This year, we have higher income and lower costs.
The Barnacross Common, the work that was done on there, was it not budgeted for? Who agreed it? Who decided it needed doing?
What they did is they had certain, we agreed that they would do certain works. It wasn't part of their normal contract.
Yeah.
We said that they had to do certain scraps in order for us to keep our SSI or meet our obligations in terms of that.
But was it agreed that we have to do that?
It was agreed. And what had happened is because of the change of management, no one had chased up the invoices. And our supplier also has had significant changes. I mean, all the contractors that we've been working with. So when they, we said to them, have you done, why haven't you done your work? And they said, well, we actually have done it. And then that's what.
Here's the bills.
So it was us doing it rather than saying, you know, we have bills. It was, why haven't you done your work?
Yeah.
You bring our SSI money at risk.
It's a recurring issue, particularly when we look at this agenda item each month, where the council is having to chase contractors for invoices. And I would have thought that there would have been a time limit put in place of how long people could invoice us because it doesn't help us with proper sort of budget management.
But the board officers aren't.
Yeah, because, you know.
Six years?
Yes. You'd think it'd be 30 days or something.
Six years?
It's six years. Sign it off in a month or it's never going to give you.
Presumably, I know we're talking about financial regs later and purchase ordering process. Presumably, we're able to track these late invoices against purchase orders and that sort of thing.
We have a process, my assistant is brilliant at doing that. We use a kind of planning system, so I can go onto a spreadsheet and just jot down that and see that. The problem that we have is that the ordering system is not as robust as it should be.
Yeah.
So if I use two spheres of government to bug at Breckland council and ask for some work, they'll send me a PO number. That means nothing to me. You know, it doesn't tell me what work they want, what the price is. If we do work for Norfolk County Council, for example, we get a proper purchase order. This is, this is where you build, this is the description of the work, this is where you send the invoice to. So we're trying to move to that. Unfortunately, I couldn't get that implemented. I've been trying for years to have it implemented. If you go back to financial reports years ago, you'll see that it was there. So now that I'm in the opportunity to do that, it's going to start on the 1st of April.
Yeah.
We are not having this. And I was explaining to the SFT that if they had to come and write these reports to see all these variances and why they have occurred, it's actually, it is an element of poor budgetary control. We're just lucky that we're underspending in some areas to counter the overspending in other areas. So we can't continue like that. So I'm really trying to address that.
Thank you.
We can do some.
Yeah, I think it's really important. If we go down the purchase order route, even if we haven't physically received the invoice, you should then, from a budgetary point of view, anticipate it at some point so the budget is more accurate.
Yeah.
Double entry booking.
Well, it's just a recurring issue where we've heard on multiple occasions, whether it's the cemetery or amenities, oh, we've had some invoices come in for work that was done six months, okay. You'd think these firms have cash flow requirements, but you know. I just wanted to ask about waste disposal costs and I see the figure there at £6,000. I was interested, you said that there has been some additional costs. And the original overspend was a lot higher than that, if I remember right. So the fact that we've bought in this new contract, I don't know if we've done a calculation of how much we've saved over the year, but I'd imagine it's quite significant because we were already, it was over £10,000, the overspend four months ago.
I think it's been quite significant. I think for, if I look at the two contracts, one was about 1,000, one was 900 and the other one was 1,200. The last invoices, we paid them the other day, was 300, 600, I think. So it is quite substantial.
Thank goodness we put that in place because I was really worried at one point that the yearly overspend for waste disposal would be over £20,000. That was the trajectory. But because that new contract's been put in place, it's actually, although we're now incurring some additional costs, it's nowhere near as bad as it would have been. Terrible.
I noticed there's an £18,000 variance on the Guildhall relating to the tea room. I'm a bit sort of puzzled because I can't, I assume that, that's obviously because it's not open, but I can't see a corresponding amount of money on the, on the other side, on the expenditure. So is that actually a loss? Or is it offset by not having to buy anything?
Figure, is there a code link to that figure?
5Q10.
Yeah, hang on. I'll find it now, can I?
Find it for you, it's on the second page.
It's 4206.
5Q10.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Case for purchases.
Well, what I was looking at was 406, which is Guildhall catering. That's on income, it says it's £18,000 line.
The income's down by 18 and the purchases are down by 4,700. So our GP percent on catering was a lot higher, it was about 60 to 70%. So if you lose, you know, £100 in sales, you only lose £30 in purchases. So that's why the conversation.
Because we weren't losing money on it.
If you took the salaries out of the salaries line, budgeted and allocated at all, that means like that. We were paying to have that tier of open.
So having it closed has actually been a benefit financially.
Yes, yes.
Although we're still paying the salaries, aren't we?
No, no, the salaries, we re-allocated the salaries.
You did, yeah.
Okay. So what's the, sorry Doug.
Sorry, can I move on to something else? I thought you were moving on.
No, no, I've got a different point.
I was just going to, very granular point on the waste thing. You say a lot of it's through skips and allotments. Is it just a practical reason why we can't allocate some of the cost there? Because it, I don't know, I just looked at the budget line and I go, oh, allotments, yeah, that's pretty much on budget. But if we're incurring lots of costs on allotments and they're actually costing us money, then I feel like.
There's quite a lot of corporate costs that are hidden, the same with amenities. Some of the skips will be for amenities, but they come under finance and personnel because that's the sort of corporate waste disposal, you know. Yeah.
So the issue was, if you don't mind, it was, we used to have about 1,200 codes and we had insurance in every single part. So we took certain costs and we opened up and we allocated. So the accounting was just due to general interest and re-adlocation. They didn't, they didn't write them down. But I think what we've done is gone from one extreme to the other extreme and it's moving back to the middle ground. And I am determined, I have my own personal development project as part of finance, is to get more functional budgets because we need to understand that otherwise we look at allotments and we don't understand what the true cost is. So therefore, the driver to look at, the process to drive it to increasing allotment fees is not there. So we will get there, but it's just.
If that makes sense, I was aware of one of those, it's very hard to manage for this. Don't want to create too much, but at the same time, it just seems hard sometimes to, when you look at it.
Is the cost of clearing allotments, is that something we expect to reduce over time?
It helps then.
I think it was.
So I think it's very, I looked at this before and it's not passed on. It's a hidden cost. All the time it's a hidden cost. Now, the cost of clearing the allotment is more than the yearly charge for that allotment. I think that if you do eventually look into it and have all the costs associated with the allotments.
But what I'm asking is, will that cost, you know, I'm assuming that once you clear an allotment, you don't have to clear it again. So what I'm asking is really, over time, do we expect that cost to diminish?
I think on a, we've got some special clearings that we have to do, but we're going to use external contractors for that. So that won't, that won't come to our cost. Why it is, but why it has been high is that we've actually been using a very thorough, far more robust inspection regime. So we've actually had people leave. And one of the reasons that they leave is because they have too much stuff on their allotments or they're not using their allotments, so they use this storage. So I think we are making inroads into that. So when the tailwind will reduce, you know, whether it's 12 months or 24 months, I'm not too sure. But I think it's Berry Road as the sites are, you know, Berry Road is virtually immaculate, I would say.
Okay, good.
London Road is, you know, if people have to leave London Road, I think we, you know, there's more timber on London Road than I think there is in the forest.
I wonder if this is something we can load on to the actual tenants in time? Because we're paying for their prestige really, aren't we? I mean, this is probably, this is probably for Chris and myself at the allotment committee, I don't know.
Deposit system is what we need to look at. The cost of the deposit should be sufficient to clear the plot. That's why we hold a deposit.
Yeah.
How much is it now, 50 quid?
It's 50 quid for a plot.
I'd rather leave me plot and sod off because you keep the 50 quid, exactly. Right.
With increasing cost of disposing. Going half. I mean, I escaped not long ago, it cost me an arm and a leg. It is a costly part of the asset of keeping things tidy. And it keeps improving very much like with the other ones. So even those trips to pounds, even if it's a special area, so I was going to come up with a point. So I have to pull my little costs up where in the guns and you.
I do think it's a good thing that plots are being cleared though. And so we need to remember that. And, you know, there's a bit of pain in the short term, but I do hope Terry's point is right, that it will get better. In the sense of there won't be as a need for as many, there's a backlog we're clearing. Once it's cleared, there shouldn't be that many frequencies.
There's so much of space, obviously.
Can you just confirm what the headline figures are? Because we're almost at the end of the year now, aren't we?
This is where I get so much nervous, ever introducing these reports because I, I have not seen. At the moment, we're sitting with a net total of about 46, 799. But it's before, it's before financial year end, so I've got to do that. We've got a lot of work to do in April, May, where we've got to check the prepayments. We've got to check what's, we haven't accrued. So I think it'll come out well. So we're not going to have a deficit, I'm fairly certain of that. What that final service will be, I'm not sure. We've also got to provide for things like the HR consultancy, for example, we haven't provided for that. And the participatory budgeting hasn't been provided for. I think we set aside £19,000 for amenities, additional anchoring. I think some of those costs have not come through. The £25,000 that we set aside for participatory budgeting is, might sort of have to come out this year in a different way. So the figures cost, we'll be okay, I'm fairly confident. But we're not, we're not backing.
We're not laying. The surface is always better than a deficit. Any other questions on the 11 month report?
Yeah, happy to note.
Can I just ask a question? 5138, green energy saving projects, we're not planning any, we're not going to spend any money this year. Will that be back in the budget for next year if it's not spent? And was there any element of energy efficiency or green energy saving from the new boiler? Or any consideration for that?
That line item was, we actually did a whole lot of small projects and we changed the lighting system in the Guildhall. And that column has actually lasted its expenditure. So I'm pretty sure we've got a budget anything for this year. We hadn't done it, so hopefully it comes.
That's only because it was spent in the previous year.
The actual projects, hopefully the same, it comes through, no electricity cost, no energy cost. We clipped the roof of the part of Carnegie, so hopefully our heating bills will be. So the end result of that is sitting, hopefully, in the other parts of the budget. Our biggest challenge is we don't, we don't have spark meters. And that's up to a lack of trying because that would actually help us quantify what those segments are.
But we've saved a fortune on heating in the Guildhall.
We have, yeah. Yeah, I bet. Extra jumper, isn't it?
Yeah. Right, we'll move on to 763, which is the draft project. This has been to a few committees for comments, so thank you to everybody that's contributed. I think it's missed venues, Terry, because obviously we're meeting tonight and you're meeting tomorrow. But, you know, it's a live document and there's always an opportunity to amend it. And we've sort of tidied up the list of projects a little bit, Alan, haven't we? Do you want to highlight which ones we've confirmed as still being required?
In terms of, all of these, I haven't done a report on the, on the status of the current work because that's where you asked me. And I'll do that when we report back with that for next year because, sorry, next month, because I have to actually get that for the reserves also. So this is only projects going forward.
Okay.
I've just taken a view of what I'm fairly certain is not going to be completed by the 31st of March.
Yeah.
And then this budget, but in the previous meeting I had this close status of the current budget.
Yeah.
And that I need to do more work on and we'll do that through the financial year end process.
And the one I wanted to, well, there's two I want to comment on. One is the play part renewal of £40,000. So previously that was spread over two years, £40,000 each year. I know we did the first year's worth of play area repairs to £40,000. Is that £40,000 the second year or is that an additional £40 to the 18?
It's the third year.
So it's a furlough, so it's another £40 on top of the 18.
That's a lot of money.
It is. And is that based on, because we had some fairly detailed roster reports and quotes to basically fulfill the roster requirements. Is that a hundred and twenty figure based on working through the recommendations?
It is. Yep.
Okay.
Is that predominantly Castle Park? I know we've got a few. Where are the biggest?
Castle's best, probably the best one out of the thirteen.
We've had to do reseeding at Fairfields. We've done, we had a spate of vandalism. And we're just renewing where things break. We have to, you know, they get inspected weekly by us and annually by students through roster. So it's just a matter of just keeping a top of it. But I think we, I think we have to turn the corner. So this forty thousand could be used to upgrade rather than repair. And that might, you know, the maintenance committee was thinking about, well, can we have a program to upgrade some of the play parks? Because they really are quite redundant, you know, all of the redundant. This forty thousand, hopefully we'll be able to be used for that rather than doing which is.
I think that's good to highlight that it's refurbishment and improvement rather than just constant repair.
I don't see the permission to.
No. You're setting a bad example.
In the operational budget, we've actually had, also increased significantly the amount of money that we've spent on repairs for play park.
We doubled it.
Yeah.
So that's a very good argument for not having any more play parks, isn't it?
I mean, how do people feel about spending yet another forty K on play parks? I mean, on top of the eighty we've already spent?
It seems a huge amount of money.
I haven't worked out what it is, but I still think there needs to be an alternative. I don't, I feel like play parks are seen as the thing to do because they've done, yeah. They're really in use, what, for kids, six years? I mean, we technically look close to one on Clarkham State. We only really go to Castle Park because we only, you know, it's not actually that much difference. We're going into town, we're going to use that play park. I actually, I do feel like at some point we can consider how we invest that money more effectively, I'm saying, I agree. David, I'm going to understand that.
I think it'd be rather nice to do, if not a consultation as such, to put in like about Thetford or something. To say, look, this is what the cost is. Could people let us have their opinions? Because when we're out counseling and talking to people, the things that do come up is a lack of amenities for your children.
Yeah.
Let me say, well, actually, we've got play park. Do you know the cost of forty grand a year? Well, let's talk about it, put it out and let people come back to us. We've got this wonderful website that's nearly working. You know, it'd be great to put something on there.
Well, it's taken there.
And say, come on, let's have some feedback.
Okay, thank you. Terry, Chris then Ron.
Um, is there a case for having fewer play parks but of better quality?
That would be my view.
Okay. Oh, it's great. What?
No, I mean, I had this discussion with, with a councillor who's not on here anymore. And he wanted to do away with some of the play parks, which I thought was really wrong. I would increase the number of play parks we have. We need one on the Norwich Road Estate.
Yep.
We need one, we need the one at Elm Road, modernizing it, brought up today. So I all fall, I mean, the more play parks we have, the better. We keep on about children's health. How we're fed up with being stuck indoors, let's give them the facilities to go outside and do something.
Go on. I just wanted to know whether the exercise park is part of that package. So things like that, I think, are worth exploring, integrating exercise in, especially for all ages, not just toddlers.
You mean the one on Castle Park?
Yeah, yeah.
It's always used, it's brilliant. Annie then Doug.
Just on the cost of the play parks. Is it possible, because you were saying that some of that money, the forty thousand is used to, to repair vandalism? When people complain about the play parks, can't we just say, actually, we spend this much money on repairing vandalism? If that didn't happen, we would have more money to spend on them. Just let people know, because everybody, you know, just to say we've got forty thousand, they're going, I don't think people think that some of that is being used to repair vandalism.
I think from memory, this financial year is about ten thousand pound on repairs specifically for vandalism.
That's quite a lot, isn't it? To let people know, because that would mean, okay, there's thirty thousand pound for play parks, isn't it? Which is a lot less.
I'm over this, Terry. Yeah, I'm sorry, apologies. I'm shooting daggers at you. I was going to say something, but I, me, I think it's about, and I'm, let's face it, you know, my councillors, because I have kids and I want them to have fun and stuff to do. So yes, I want activities for kids, I want them to have places to go out there. Help me when they can do things. I don't think that necessarily correlates directly to a play park. You know, there's lots of other facilities we can add, that kind of money that might be better, encourage them into different sports, we could do that. I, I feel like the money there, I worry that it's just, it's going to be spent on play parks. We just always spend on play parks, I've been thinking how we can actually do more for children to keep them active.
But we used to have youth clubs, but we don't have them anymore.
Hold on, Ron. Terry.
Everyone loves play parks, yes.
No, it's all right. Go, go. Yeah.
Carla.
I, I'm not in the committee, I'm just giving my opinion, but I think play parks is a double extra, you know, is the cost, is a supplement. But the benefits to the community from that effect is a great failure. And I think the community wouldn't see well, if we'd done away with parks all completely by any means. I agree with Chris on that respect. I'm not sure we need to have so many. Or if we need to increase them, given the cost they have, to be honest, Chris. But I think at least make the ones we have in quality industry for the children, they're absolutely essential so they have a place to play. But I remind you as well, that on the last meeting, a minute, this was something called Everybody Has The Right To Play. So we can't really conflict with ourselves as a councils. We sign up and we all unanimously agree to promote that as a core principle and then do away with the play parks. I just think it's a bit conflictive if we go that way. But I think there's got to be some strategy available found to invest their money a bit more wisely. Safety comes first and then how we upgrade and by which pace we do that, maybe something that needs to be discussed a bit further.
Can I make a suggestion then, Alan, as a bit of an action point? Could you or maybe Mark make contact with Breckland about what section one oh six contributions that we've got available for play? Because the point Ron made about the gym equipment, we didn't pay for that as a town council, we coordinated that. But it was section one oh six contribution, forty odd grand. So if there is any money available, it can't be used for repairs. But the point you made about actually, we're now in the realms of upgrade. So section one oh six is relevant because we're improving, not just maintaining the current standards. It'd be worth looking at section one oh six contributions. And what was everyone else going to make? Forty, forty. I can't remember.
I may tell you very quickly, as part of that proposal that was approved by us, one of the points that was quite reinforced it was the ability of spaces that are adaptable, that are ability friendly, that can accommodate all different members of the community. And this is something that was clear from that last meeting that we were lacking, was a facility that would accommodate people's abuse, multiple levels, neurodiverse and whatever situation may be. So maybe, maybe that we have to invest in the play parks, but maybe find a strategy of what the priorities are and time to accommodate. So it's accessible for everybody in the community.
Okay.
I'd echo that. It feels like we're just sort of jogging along rather than thinking about what we're doing. I think there may be a case for some sort of strategy. I'm hearing the word working party looming into being.
I think it's something we can take forward through amenities. We need a play area plan.
Yeah.
So I'm sensing we're happy to keep the forty K in there for play areas.
I think for now, you're probably right too. I don't know, it's up to you guys, I'm just.
And the twenty grand that we've got as the project budget for the Sculpture Trail. How much of that is donor money and how much of that is our own money?
Big ten thousand of it is our money.
Okay.
So we've received money, and we will receive money from B F E R and must be Breckland, I'm trying to remember.
I think it was M T I. Okay, so we're happy to continue to deliver the Sculpture Trail.
Can I, can I ask? I've never heard anything about this. Where is it and what is it?
Been on the back burner for a long while. So it's basically putting in place a sculpture trail primarily along the river. And basically creating certain walks within Thetford. It comes in the river and Barnhamcombe and places like that. And there will be some wood sculptures, some metal sculptures, that sort of thing. So it's a nice project, it's about getting people for that, walking. As Doug was saying about, you know, not necessarily play equipment, but stuff for families to do and there'd be a little trail guide and that sort of thing.
I think we do get hijacked into thinking, and I think this is reinforcing Doug's point, that the only form of play is a play park. You know, we can be more creative.
Yeah, sports, all sorts of things like that. Yeah, absolutely.
The restoring King's House Council Chamber and the removal costs, I mean, combined, that's ten thousand pounds. That's quite a lot of money, isn't it?
We have quotes. The highest grade we've got for sorting out this wall, for example, is only two thousand pounds. But we don't know what's behind it. So I've just been, we don't have to spend, because it's budgeted, we don't have to spend it, I thought. That's the point, you know, it's like play parks. This committee or the maintenance committee will have to make a formal decision of all these projects. This is just to ensure that we've actually worked out where it is. So we don't incur it, we don't need it. But I hate to have a situation where, you know, somebody's doing it, we don't have a budget to do it. Then we're going to have to do environments and do, we can't do it necessarily a little bit more formally.
Okay.
Does the, does the budget include the archiving and removal of the records?
Some of the archiving costs have been really incurred. And they would be an operational cost. We haven't, we haven't budgeted that in the budget.
Because I understand there's a lot there.
And the books are really gone, so.
All right, okay.
So there's two, there were two bits that, that standing forces way ahead of, with Thetford town councillors.
Always difficult.
So in a specially, special room that's.
Okay.
Very sorry for it.
So there'll be ongoing storage costs as well.
But they're not as, they're actually quite reasonable.
Yeah.
But that's a standing force.
Yeah, okay, because they're committed to the goals.
Okay. Sorry, Carla.
It's just a quick question. Can I, how should I ask? The savings that we're going to incur on the longer term by moving from here to coming, which was the whole plan initially to save costs for the council. Will not the costs of the whole movie over time dissipate? I mean, it is a cash flow issue, but will they not so dissipate in savings that we're going to gain long term with that? Isn't that the strategy, if I understood well, basically?
These costs are one off costs.
Yeah, well, yes. The problems that are all one off now. Yes, particularly, yes, I see that vision.
There were two things I added, took the liberty of adding. One is the Thomas Paine plan. So we've added ten thousand. I'm still waiting for the quotes. So if it's ten thousand, we can possibly afford it. And the other one is because we didn't have a venues and market meeting until tomorrow night, I just went and did some inquiries. And you'll see right at the bottom there, there's the, this, this one for the market place sounds, so, the Carnegie speakers, the one about that. And they believe that the speakers need to be placed. So I've just put it in the budget, that has to be confirmed by meetings market.
Okay. I think we've probably commented on that enough. I'm quite keen for it not to go to full council at the moment. I think it needs a bit more work done just to review some of the costs. I'm quite keen that we're identifying where this money is coming from on each aspect. Well, okay. Hold on.
That the, you can be the page below, why?
Yeah.
Can I ask one question about that? I was just, so I understand that. And this, I feel like I must ask this question for general reserve. Which fund is that and why is there a hundred and twenty thousand mark against it for the next financial year?
The general reserve is the contingency.
Yeah.
And the hundred and twenty thousand would possibly be the seventy five thousand for the fire risk assessment projects. And the parish partnership of twenty five thousand would be the main one thing.
And the, just on the, the fire thing, that's a one of course, it will be, it won't pay pays for the net. We don't need to add anything to that.
No, it's just a one of the costs.
And how long would that last for, I think?
Well, we're hoping that will keep us, we'd be very careful and diligent, I'd like to say this time, we're actually appointing a project manager before we do anything else. We've got fire specialists that's going to come in, we've got quotes from three suppliers. They come out to about seventy five thousand pounds. We don't believe that that's, that we shouldn't be incurring that type of cost. So what we're doing is we give the project manager to actually break it all down to various tasks and then do them as small assignments. So for example, bringing in the firewalls where they need to be put in, that would be one task. And they will then go days with all three suppliers and actually make a recommendation to say, well, this is what we need to do. But we will bring a plan to finance the personnel, once that's done, with, from the project managers, that we can actually, there's an accountability and transparency over that.
Thanks. Okay.
We can do something right at the glance.
On the, sorry, on the fire thing, we've got to incur a lot of costs here that we're not going to incur in future. So that's going to be a significant save. Well, the bonuses of moving from here.
I mean, what we're essentially saying we're going to do if we adopt this schedule of projects is spend three hundred thousand pounds of reserves in the next year. Which is a pretty major decision. And I think we just need to pause for a moment and make sure that we're happy with that. I mean, it's pretty, you know, almost a third of our total reserves in the next financial year. And I'd rather we went through the projects in a bit more detail before we commit tomorrow.
A bit quiet.
Because of the, some of the things we've put in place. It's heating reserves this year. One of the major costs is the two towers, which is fine.
And the heating.
And the heating. So that's a one off cost, those things. But next year, a lot of our income is going down because of the steps we're taking now. Our expenditure is not going to be so high.
Expenditure is going down.
Expenditure's going down.
Expenditure's going down. I'll do that. Expenditure's going down. So over the next two or three years, we will be putting a significant chunk of that reserves back that we've drained out this year.
In theory.
Of course, sort of in theory.
There's always more expenditure.
I think, I think the trouble with that argument, David, is that there are some people who always want to spend money.
Yeah, I know, I know. I can't believe it.
I think what I would like to do is to look through the reserves and the project list. And then come back with a proposal next month if you're happy with that.
So can I take a proposal? We do the financial year end, that's in May. It might be worthwhile to actually combine that, because we have to do a schedule with that. And then you'll then know exactly what your reserves are and then we can actually turn going forward.
Okay, and that's intentional. With them, with the scaffolding and those flame and towers, we are incurring a weekly cost of a thousand. Is it possible to at least have that scheduled in? Because if we're putting it back another ten weeks to May or June, that's another ten or fifteen thousand.
That decision's already been made. This is, so this is separate to this, by delaying, it won't impact anything. That's already underway, because it's already been agreed to. So the heating and the scaffolding and the two towers.
Nothing's been delayed, though.
This is all progressing. This essentially is new projects.
Right, that's fine.
And with the best will in the world, I doubt any of the new projects will be started by May anyway, because we've got quite a few big ones on the cover city. Okay, so I'm going to leave it there. And I think coming back in May, once we've got the first four years of accounts and an up to date report on reserves, and then we can take stock for the year ahead. Seven six four, internal control review to review and update the template for internal control review that is required by legislation and is referred to in our financial regulations.
So what do you try to do with that? First thing that we used to do internal control reviews and a lot of councils do them. And I don't think they really understand why they do them and what the purposes. So I've spent a lot of time developing this particular module. Basically, if you get the presentation right. So I spent a lot of time developing this particular module, basically, if you, if you get the uh dissertation the right place. Uh, in May or June, whenever it happens, we will be coming to the council and, and, and asking the council to agree all these steps. Can you check, you know, do you? Is council happy that step one, step two, internal control objective three, four, five, six, et cetera, are, can be ticked off? And previously, there was, there was really nothing to have the basis, and what we did is we took that and we said, okay, if we're gonna ask council to do that, we actually need to do an internal control review that actually enables each of those assertions, that you could actually say, yes, we can sign it off, because these are the controls that we have in place. And so what we've done is we've developed this template, it's worked fairly well for the last two, two years, so this will be the third year that we actually use it. And all it requires is, is, is if this committee is happy for these assertions, for the internal control review to contain this. The committee can elect councillors to do the internal control review, the idea is that you interrogate me as, as town clerk and, and finance officer. And, and get the assurance that what we say we're doing is adequate. And what I've done is use, the highlights in yellow are changes that have happened recently, that's probably still need to be tested a little bit more so that we can um, um, councils can get the assurance, but those are the things that we're focusing on. So some of the issues that have come out in previous internal control reviews is if controls of credit cards, uh, uh, there was loss of control at some stage over that, that's been rectified. The ordering system needs attention, we've highlighted that, and there's some other, some other factors. So it's a little bit of a, a kind of governance model. But I believe if, if the council were ever asked, how did you make that decision, they would actually use this as a basis of justifying that.
David, um, I like that, but the yes box, which yes, I'd like your signature in it, for example. And the, the mayor or the, the lead, the financing person, like two signatures saying it's been done and they're satisfied with that.
That table was a naturally supplied document, isn't it?
Yeah.
The one that she has no, that's the same table for all parish and town councils.
But it's.
Um, and the full version, there is a bit at the bottom, and I think that's the chair and full council that has to sign it, isn't it?
Uh, it's the chair of the council.
That'll do.
In the top part.
Yeah, so that's just a amended version of the questions. Once it's approved by full council, once it's been completed, the mayor signs it on behalf of the council.
Fine, yeah. Looks, looks excellent.
Yeah. Um, so the non-A councillors who undertake the review, in the past, I've always felt that it's best to have two councillors who are not members of the finance committee to do it. Um, and, and funnily enough, Carla, um, although you are here this evening, um, you're not a member of finance and personnel.
Hi, I've got a good table on that.
And I did wonder, because obviously you've got a, a sort of legal background, and I know you're very good at interrogating things.
Right, is that a problem?
That is a problem. I thought about yourself and then Stuart Wright, so, you know, he's a child accountant, and he's not on finance and personnel, and I thought the two of you would actually be quite good for this.
I, I don't mind playing. And I'm not in finance, so they can.
Yeah.
Why not? Sure.
Yeah, right.
Why not? So it's just fine.
Version seven.
Do you want to have someone else in addition to those two, or just those two?
Maybe I can ask.
But choose enough.
Oh, yeah.
It's just someone to feed after the committee. I'll, I'll take minutes.
I think it'd be good for you to do, there's a sort of experience.
Okay.
Why am I saying yes?
Yes. Oh, you've got three, you lucky thing. Uh, I'm happy to propose those three. Would somebody like second?
Ron?
All agreed? Thank you very much for volunteering. Anything else on the internal control review? So Alan will be in touch with you both from the setup.
Okay, that's all right, yeah.
As part of that, have a look at previous versions as well, because this is something we do every year. But it would be particularly useful, I think probably for you, Terry, as a new councillor, to actually maybe ask questions that you haven't been asked before.
Yeah.
Yeah, useful.
It's a good, good balance, eh? Seven, six, five, financial risk assessment to review the financial risk assessment that was distributed to committee members and published with this agenda on the website. When's the last time we reviewed the financial risk assessment?
They get reviewed every year. I don't review it. I talk about personal qualifications. If I give you a little bit of history, I think, I think this has gone through quite a rigorous process. Uh, every year we, we find it. But I think the one mistake that we possibly made last year, we potentially think it to the financial risk assessments, and not put it, brought it into the financial risk, into the financial regulations. So I tried not to make that mistake uh, uh, this year. You know, things like our project management, you know, we've addressed that in the financial regulations, because we actually need project management, I think. Those committees, we are, the committee office, you've heard me say that uh so often. Um, and there's other changes that we've done, that I've recommended we finish the financial regulations, because then it's a more alive process. Because as officers, we go, we review the financial regulations far more often than we would review the financial risk assessment. But it is a, it's, it's, it's an evolving document. I, I was quite surprised at how many mistakes I found in last year's one, and last year, I was even, you know, the minutes of the corresponding meeting were about that long, because we had all the queries that we had listed. It is evolving. I think it does address uh, uh, the risks. Our risk environment hasn't changed very much from the last two or three years, uh, so I have kept it. And in some of the cases, our risk, our understanding of this is actually improved. So I'll use an example, when we had this too, we, we didn't, we didn't, we thought that we were actually assuming responsibilities without, without this series of uh, accruing income or generating in, income from it. It's actually turned out to be the opposite way around, regenerating income, but we've actually haven't assumed very many responsibilities there. So that changes the risk profile of that particular item.
And when I went through it, the first thing I saw was lots of green, which is always a good sign, and I'm always drawn to the red. There was a bit in here about e-commerce. Um, failure to access, uh, failure to maintain access to council online accounts. With the increased use of e-commerce, council accounts are being opened in personal names rather than using titles. When staff leave, access to accounts is restricted or denied. New account opening protocols have been developed to mitigate this risk. So that deals with any new accounts that are opened. Is there a process of going back through any that are already currently there and changing them as well?
We, we are doing that, we have to do that, otherwise we just lose access to our accounts.
Yeah.
So I had last year, for example, I, I think it was eight months, I couldn't access our water accounts. Uh, so it took ages to be able to do that, so we very strictly do that. And what we've done in front of our protocol is that we, instead of, you know, I used the, the email address town clerk at Thetford Town Council rather than out of York at Thetford Town Council. And all the other managers and staff are associated with, with a department rather than with, with their personal name. But there's so many accounts, you keep discovering them, you know, often, but we are doing it, because if we don't do it now, you know, we'll be a stage where we can't do it yet.
Would it be good practice to have the same, say, three names on every account that you find? So as, so as, you know, you're sort of future-proofing, so, so you know who's on the, which names are on it, rather than having, you know, Joe Blogs or whoever.
We, we try to do that, so, but unfortunately, in some cases, you could only have one administrator, so, so.
Okay, yeah.
So, but we do try to do that as a general rule, because that, you know, if something happens to be a hospital for, you know, foremost, you know, someone needs to still, the business, the, the council operates. So we have to address that uh issue, and we try, but I have one, for example, on Sage, I can't add other people to the, to the account, unfortunately.
In some organisations where I've worked before, the, the head of the organisation has a list of everybody's passwords and stuff like that. Uh, anyway, I mean, where do we stand on sort of GDPR and whatnot these days?
Uh, you, these days, uh, for example, that's why we lost access to our wave accounts, because we were using, I was using my predecessor's uh password.
Yeah.
Uh, they get, they really do either put in uh protocols, or they just suspend you and then you have to phone in.
Yeah.
And my predecessor was a female, so it's actually quite difficult to be the phone in. Because as much as I try to speak with this, I can't.
I mean, it's too magical, as well. If I'm away, people have access to, to my emails. And they're incredibly well-protected because of all the, the dating, all the, the stuff that I deal with.
I think so long as you have a system where you knowingly give it to other people, I think that bypasses GDPR in some sense. You know, you can have private emails, but then also if it's a work email and people need access, you know.
Yeah.
At the magazine, we have about Thetford Magazine, and three of us have access to it, because it's business organisation. Okay, well, that's been, I'm glad that it's been, you know, working our way backwards as well as forward. Um, and the one that was a risk value of nine, I think it was the only one. Inadequate maintenance of council-owned historical building, council may have inadequate funds to finance or repairs required to bring into safe and usable condition. The scale of the essential restoration works at the Guildhall, hundred thousand pounds, and St Peter's are reflected at council's adequate level of reserve. St Peter's roof is still outstanding, and this was identified as urgent works in two thousand and eight. We, we move fast in. This is a public safety risk in respect of St Peter's. There's also a legal risk to not maintain enlisted buildings. So the decision that we've taken in relation to the Guildhall
This is definitely.
Addresses the, the first part, but the second part, St Peter's, is tied up with the heritage master plan situation. So that will still appear on the uh risk assessment, because there are actually no further forward. Although there has been quite, you know, public safety risk is reduced in the sense of there's been quite a lot of work going on to deal with some of the immediate health and safety issues, hasn't it? As far as I'm concerned, it's wind and watertight and relatively safe. It's just a shell, but um.
I, I, I think the fact that we have, that we're identifying the risk, it doesn't mean that we're not doing anything at all, or looking at the diaphragm or us. It's just that we understood the risk and we've actually valued it. And this is why dealing with St Peter's in the medium, you know, short to medium term is actually quite fundamental, otherwise we are going to have some challenges at some stage.
I'm just wondering if that one should be a nine.
Four point nine is, oh, the, the other one.
No, the, yeah, high risk and high likelihood.
So, do you want?
Four point nine, then.
Oh, four point nine, it is, it is a nine.
It is a nine, I'm just wondering if that should be a lower score or not.
I, I would be reluctant to, to, I think we need to focus on, so I think we should be reporting back on, on that. So if the heritage master plan doesn't, isn't a sounding source, as, there should still be emphasis of management to actually go find or look at other things. Try assess what we can do to mitigate that risk.
Very.
Yep.
Um, this is sort of a bit of a tangential point, probably. Um, it's, it says here, heritage master plan is still in progress. Obviously, to believe it finished last October. Um, what is happening and what is going on?
It's, uh, the final reporting is still happening around the heritage master, master plan. They've got extended it uh by um historical lottery fund. Uh, they actually had a big system failure, uh, and so they extended all their projects. To enable us to keep all our final reporting in the sector, so.
Do we, do we have an expected finished date?
Uh, it's finished.
Sorry?
It is, I, it's, I think it's in weeks rather than.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I had end of March, it's something I've heard, I don't know if I've made that, but I think that's mentioned me.
Okay, and what does finished look like?
It's a report.
What happens?
I was a little anxious to test that, but I.
It must be that, doesn't it?
I, I, I don't know. I, 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 I think that project needs, we need to take control of the ownership of it again at some stage, and I, it's just.
Well, well, if I'm looking at a financial risk assessment that gives me the highest possible score of risk, and it's reliant on being resolved on the heritage master plan, it's quite important, but we know what's going on.
Yeah, well, well, there's other phases to it, it's my understanding, so, 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 so the heritage master, this is the first part of it, when, when there's a phase two of identified projects. Because if we don't identify any projects in St Peter's, if they, they could take to the next level, then we're in trouble, you know, we're gonna come back to this.
Yeah, it's at that stage, it's like that ridiculous meeting, that presentation was identifying the projects. And we couldn't do that, could we, sitting in here, looking at some absurd presentation, as opposed to going and.
There were no costings either.
No, no, it's just, no, I don't, so, so.
No, just.
My understanding is that's sort of conceptual level. What, what gets a bit is conceptual, it then gets developed further, there's another phase two, and then there's a phase three to it. So we're finishing phase one, this minus there.
The concept was like the, the end of Station Road, a little road junction, which is absolutely nothing to what we want to do. Making that look pretty is not going to benefit the middle of Thetford, um, the, the, the Station Road Junction. Um, we, we've, we've identified the main buildings and we need to go out and talk to people. Sorry, Doug.
Yeah, no, just because I don't know if it's, you know, I kind of am interested in this sort of stuff, but my understanding is the phase one, and then we get a report. And then it's, right, what do we want to do now? And that's when it should come back to the decision upfront. Now, exactly, Kuhn, when you make that decision, I think still needs to go on down, it, it's something we probably need to decide which committee sort of leader, et cetera, and I think there needs to be a, a clear structure on that. Phase two would then be identifying, okay, so we think um St Peter's Church and, and council are the priorities, and we, we should move, move on that, and then we ask. We'd need to, I believe, spend a bit of money, but then I think we'd have to be back with heritage fund, lottery funding as well. So, okay, right, now we can develop this plan in this direction a bit more specifically, that's when the threat gets drawn up with more costs. So to be honest, even if everything goes swimmingly with heritage lottery fund, et cetera, uh, and heritage master plan, it, it's not a solution to St Peter's Church in the next four years. It's, it's going to be one of those things.
That's why I worry.
That's, yeah, why you're asking.
Unless the, that will change us, the way it's structured, the way the funding is now, is there is one project for the middle of Thetford. And that's the bit that I find quite strange. They want us to identify these four buildings, or five buildings, whatever they are, and put one costing together for all those projects in one, in one lump. And I find that incredible. It would be wonderful to say, focus on St Peter's Church, on the Guildhall, whatever, and then cost that up. Get an idea for it, develop it, and then go back to the next one in a few years' time. At the moment, they want one project, detailed costing, detailed everything, but a whole of the middle of Thetford.
My understanding was that in one, but that's the ideal and goal, but there's, they recognise that's constituting building boxes, that's. And if it's not all happening at once, and then the next stage is for us to prioritise it and say which one we want at that point.
Let's say.
Can we do it that way or not is the other question, but that's at least the structure of what it's supposed to go.
We need to sit down and actually develop it, do something.
Yeah.
Because we've been talking about this for a year or, well, no, ten or eleven months already. And the, the, the funding bid was two years, three years ago, and we're no further forward.
And Terry, then, please.
I think the heritage master plan is ours to do what we will with. It's, it's that simple, isn't it? We don't have to abide by, you know, that is just a report, it's not a dictat. So we make it what we want, and I've, I've got some pretty firm ideas about what I want to do with it. Carla?
Mine, I have a question. Uh, so last time, Tricola, people, whatever you want to call it, consultants were here presented, and we are at that crossroads that you mentioned, where we could take things forward, but we needed to come up with a project to go inside the building to justify the use of the building, if I remember well. How far along since then have we come in, in reality? That's what I'm trying to get at, trying to understand exactly which point we are, to understand where we're trying to go with this, because this doesn't seem to be a direction at the moment. But I don't know exactly where, exactly where, so I'm trying to step in, it's not always exactly where you're stepping, because you don't know what's been done and what the next step is. I heard about three steps, but when and how is what I still want to know.
No, no, I agree. Doug, do you want to come back?
Uh, yeah, I can say on that one, it isn't, it is partly the risk, because we obviously wanted key players, I think heritage lottery, uh, the heritage master plan would involve with different parties as well, so they have a stake in what they want as well. Um, what we think that's a good thing or not, is, yes, you're right, it's partly what we do with, but just there's other people we need to sort of work with, which is why it's all a bit murky, and very strange about the way it's been presented to us, I find.
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
And Doug, you mentioned stage two and stage three. Is your understanding that the o- original funding envelope, the two hundred and fifty K, does that include stage two and stage three?
I don't think so, but I don't know, that's my understanding is it doesn't, I believe it does.
So we've adopted a draft project budget earlier for the year ahead.
Did you see where I'm getting at?
So the heritage master plan is integral to our financial risk assessment, is actually really important to our project plan, because if the stage two isn't funded. So the Heritage Master Plan is integral to our financial risk assessment, is actually really important to our project plan, because if the stage two isn't funded, as I don't think it is, with a greater project budget that doesn't allow any money to do stage two or stage three. So, anyway, I'm, I'm sure you're really pleased you mentioned Heritage Master Plan in the financial risk assessment. Tangent. I do think, no, no, I do think it is related because it's the biggest score. Uh, there's two nines and it's the biggest score on here and it does relate to our reserves and our project budget. And it's happening in isolation to those things. And I think, I think we're right to, we're right to be concerned. Anyway, sorry. I'll try and bring us back forward. The only other one was the, so we'll, we'll keep those scorings the same, there's no problem with that. And the fire safety requirements not being met and, you know, we've correctly identified them. And at least we're aware of the problem and we've obtained quotes and we're fairly on track.
Yeah.
Was there any other risks detailed within there that people wanted an update on or more information about?
Doug? It's one of the other, um, so I want to, to give me, is the, to do with Charles Spencer?
Yeah.
Um, and I do remember having a discussion about it at a previous meeting. Uh, I think it says all councils would be briefed, um, uh, have briefing on it. I just wanted to check, is there any papers about that? Just so we've got that for records. Um.
Yeah.
I'll get the number, sorry, I was clicking on to another.
No, so we were trying to quantify the risk on that particular one, weren't we? And in terms of the town council's liability.
Yeah.
And we, I think we did get some legal advice, didn't we? I can't remember where we.
No, 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 it, I, it took me quite a while to work out the methodology, so I was trying to work out how to do it, so it's just a matter of thought doing it. I, I spent about three, three months with another guy thinking, what if I had, could I do it this way or should I do it that way? So I think I can actually do it by just doing. What would need to happen or the defaults to, to clear. So, um, but probably about a day is where we're.
Which means you've not got a free day in the morning, right?
Cool.
Um, that's fine, just make, I just wanted to make sure I missed anything, I guess.
It's, it's in the action points, so please keep it careful.
Everyone happy? Um, question?
Yep.
Did we ever establish whether we are still insured against terrorist attack? Because that's not my name.
We are still insured because insurance.
We are still insured.
Insurance premium got frozen. And, and, and if we change it, then we're going to pay a higher premium, so we just have to do it together.
Right. Terrorist attack isn't in the risk assessment, I don't think.
People might start going to Cain.
And didn't we establish, well, I don't know, the insurance stuff for renewal at some point?
Uh, it's, we thought it was, it had to be renewed in June last year. Uh, it runs through for the second year and then it goes off renewal.
Okay, so we might revisit that point when we review the schedule. Uh, and it says to recommend the adoption of the finance risk assessment for council. And would somebody like to propose that we recommend that? Chris? And second up? David? I could pay any attention tonight, David, because you need to present these minutes and. Because I'm not going to be there.
Sorry.
But you're not there either.
Not either.
Oh, well, we need to, we need to keep it then.
Annie's here. Annie's going to be here.
Shall I send the money? Uh, Alan, I hope you're fine.
Thank you.
We have child. That was your starring moment next week.
Don't stay with the grandchildren, you can do.
Go to talk.
You're going to Berkeley.
Yeah. Uh, right, moving on to seven, six, six, review of the financial regulations. Finance heavy tonight.
Unfortunately, this year in, that's right obligation by the department, so.
But there are some quite useful, um, proposals to amend financial regs. Are you happy to take us through them and we'll sort of stop for comment on each one, is that right?
Sure. On item number one, the orders, we, we've spoken about that earlier on, and I think it's really a matter of making it more robust. I'm driving it at the S and T level and I'm going to make sure that it happens because templates being developed and processes. And I'm fairly certain that we will get, um, um, we'll be able to get the financial regulations to support a process that's actually relevant to, to what we do from, um, from a budget control and spending perspective. The second one is, is, is an issue.
Just on the, the ordering, I assume everybody's happy with that one.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. To be honest, I'm amazed that doesn't happen already.
We covered it earlier, so.
Brilliant.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure.
The second point was really around authorising commercial leases. I become very much aware of this because I get an email sent to me from, from our property agents. And they'll say, such and such is communicating, uh, these are the hit of terms, and are you happy or not? And I just thought that, that because of the nature of, of places like the Shands, in particular, I think it would be very appropriate for, 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 for it to be council, councillor oversight, over that. Or otherwise councillor has, council, this committee has to, which is responsible for the commercial leases, has to set out some framework for, 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 for rest upgrade, because I feel very naked, if I can use that term, uh, in making those decisions. Uh, um, it is quite difficult, so we need a framework or we can get some councillor oversight over it. So we prefer to go to councillor oversight, because I bet we have to be a little bit more flexible. If some, if, if, if our property agent gets approached to do something, it's not in the framework, then we've got a whole lot of delays. Whereas if we had another mechanism, we could actually, um, do that. So that, that's really what the proposal would be around that.
I'm happy with that. Yeah, we've seen the report and, or some of us have seen, three of us, four of us have seen the report from the Stanforth Trust and we, we can't go like that. We, we need a proper mechanism to do this stuff.
I had a meeting with the clerk this morning and she said to put that in the report papers. I said, we do exactly the same thing.
Good. Okay.
The third item that, that I've suggested changing is just to entrench the role of the grants working group. We set up that grants working group. It's just to make sure that, 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 that when we have grant or we report on grants, that we actually run through the, uh, uh, that working group and it's there, and it's, it, it's effective and it does what it's supposed to do.
Yes. Um, I think we should make it a requirement in financial regs that, uh, grants can't, um, uh, it's not grants so much, it's terms and conditions for grants can't be signed without councillor approval. And I'm not too worried about applying for grants, um, because you're not bound to anything. But I do feel quite strongly that we've had situations where we've applied for grants and we've, officers have signed to accept terms and conditions that councillors are completely unaware of. Ultimately, it's the councillors who are responsible, as the council. Um, and there should be some sort of, uh, probably Finance and Personnel Committee should sign to say that we're happy to accept those terms and conditions. I mean, lots, you know, lots of charities that I've been involved in, um, you know, the chief exec, uh, has to get board approval to sign up to those terms and conditions, because they're still alive, even if those members and staff move on. So, David?
Um, up to a point, yes, but depends on the size of the grant.
Yeah.
You know, if you, if we turn around and say, yeah, you know, above five thousand, whatever, but not, not every grant, I don't think.
Hmm.
That can be just a thought. We don't need to know about the small grants of fifty quid, a hundred quid, five hundred quid.
I can't imagine we're applying for too many small grants.
No, but they are, they are going to be, they're going to be some small ones coming out.
I'm, I'm happy with the £5,000 figure, it makes sense. If we don't meet the terms and conditions, pay the small one back. You happy with that?
Happy.
Okay, uh, four?
Four is, I also mentioned this, I, it's a bane in my life that we don't have the project. And what I've done is I've actually put a, a, a monetary amount in. And a committee would have to say you don't appoint project managers rather than being the other way around. So if there's a project of more than £25,000, we have to appoint a project manager and this, the committee approving the, the, the order or the tender actually decides otherwise.
Yeah. That feels a pretty good insulation, uh, against what happened with the towers and scaffolding, doesn't it?
And it's happened to us in other projects too, and things like that.
Yeah, brilliant, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, item, item five is, uh, we have, when we put out tender documentation, we put in a whole lot of requirements that none of the offices are really in a position to, to assess. So sometimes we ask for environmental information, we ask for health and safety. And where, you know, an IT contract to have an environmental, uh, um, strategy, I'm actually sure is that relevant. I can understand that, you know, if you were doing waste management or something like that, that would be quite relevant. And I think it's really just a matter of saying, making sure that the tender document supports what's actually being acquired. Rather than just saying that, well, it's a checkbox, we need to have this, this and this and this. So we put it in regardless of what the nature of the tender is.
I, I think we've limited the number of contractors that have submitted tenders because we've asked for documents that a lot of firms don't have and they're not even relevant. Why would we narrow the pool of people interested in doing work for us on the basis of documents that are not even relevant to the role?
Yeah, no, that's, no, that's fine.
Um, anything else to ask? Um, is there anything in any of the financial regs or any other documents that, um, require contracts to be in place um, for successful tendering procedures? Do we have, do we have, do we have firms working for us that don't have contracts in place?
Thank you.
That has to stop, doesn't it?
Well, what we've done.
Surely.
What, if I can, what we've done where possible is I've, if, if I've been involved in that, for example, the IT contract that we renewed, uh, uh, we actually, I could, they said it's an agreement and I actually specified there that any conflict between this agreement and the tender documents, the tender document, uh, 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 is text precedent. And I've actually, they've agreed to those. So, but in most cases, uh, we don't do any, any contracts whatsoever. It's.
Another thing I'll be keen on would be penalty clauses, if appropriate. Well, I think we should have a, um, standard contract that should probably be included as maybe an appendices to, um, financial regs, which includes key information. One of them is on, obviously, um, rate laws. KPIs and financial penalties. And I think actually we should standardise our contracts. Because one of the major issues we've had as a council is with contractors taking the mic. Frankly. Um, councils, it's an easy touch, aren't they?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I'm happy if you want to adopt the rest and come back at a later date with a list of, pick up the contractual requirement.
And, and the fallout of that.
Is there such a thing as a list of pre-approved suppliers from Breckland or anything like that?
Breckland operates approved.
But we access that? Or is that not viable?
I, I don't think that we, we have that much buying power, uh, and I we don't have enough of the same routine contracts. So, yeah, insurance, IT, that would be about it.
Yeah, ours are project specific, whereas Breckland is more routine. Um, that said, if it's over £25,000, we do put it on the, the tender portal, don't we, and firms can bid for it.
So they've got to pre-quantify there anyway.
Yeah. But I do think it should be a financial reg requirement, requirement that contracts are in place.
Maybe it's because I wasn't in finance before, they actually assumed there was already a breakout clause and a remedy. And so clause included embedded into those contracts, particularly when the, the, the average of about £25,000, which is the highest essential amount in a contract. But it's not there, I always do put it there because it's a safety net.
Yeah.
For us.
I've not sensed. I've not sensed a lot of willingness from the council to address poor performance from contractors. And I think one of the reasons is because we don't have, it's like the conversation earlier about job descriptions. If you don't have a contract, what are the key terms in which we're engaging them? How, what do we hold them to?
If I understand well, I think it's a fear because there's not enough contractors out there for us to be picking and choosing about who we, you know. It's not many people putting forth and burning themselves for to the tenders. So sometimes we have to do it when the ones that come forward and just pick the best out of the, whatever we give them. But even so, I think embedded those, those, those clauses in the contract doesn't take away from us going into those contracts. Just to give us certain, certain situations where the contractors will let down or they give out halfway or they're not fulfilling their commitments, we pay for our surplus, we're not getting. There's got to be some sort of remedy embedded in the contract. I think that's a little point. Should be addressed.
Yeah, I'll give you a little, for instance, these steps that are done behind the Guildhall. Guy started work, um, sort of before Christmas, after Christmas decided to go on holiday. You can't, you can't be doing stuff like, you can't be doing stuff.
Missions with return on contracts on occasions. And that is a very good example of why those clauses have to be there. On the long term, they will pay off by being there.
Toilet cemetery opening?
Oh dear, the Christmas.
Christmas Day.
Of course, the Christmas Saturday. Yeah, no. But those things can be prevented if people are aware, there are consequences of the population not being kept up to.
Yeah. Um, sorry, Alan, I'm trying to some work for you.
No, no, no.
Um, don't expect that to be demonstrated.
I put an reaction plan for next year's review, you don't mind, because it's so much to do this year.
Yeah. And I think, uh, some of these contracts will resolve themselves, toilet. For example, we're recruiting our own person, they'll be resolved through other ways. But if we're going to take any new contracts on, um, we need to get it right now, moving forwards.
But it was those flaws and those missed points that led us to finding an alternative. Because otherwise the contract was working well, we would never address and never hire another person. We'd continue with the contract if that was working out, and which it wasn't.
Uh, six. Regulation twenty one needs to permit the charity to appoint its own clerk and separate the town clerk from the charity.
The regulation says that the, the, um, town council appoints the town clerks up to the trust. So it's just to separate that up, because we've actually have changed that.
Okay.
Sorry, what, charity?
Standing before.
All right, okay.
Any? And I assume that also, uh, would apply, um, if the colony is put to a charity. Yeah. I want to future proof that by amending that to say, um, any future charities that the council is the sole corporate trustee of, that would cover that. Otherwise, effectively, the eighteen councillors are voting on the appointment of a clerk for the charity and you've got no idea who it is. Anyone got any other points about financial regs? Have you all read them in detail?
Inductively.
Pop quiz next month.
Skin bridge, just for this particular session.
Well, they are a very good document. Anything else on financial regs? Are these a recommendation, recommendation for council, aren't they?
This is a recommendation. I'll actually incorporate them into the financial regs and put it as a separate item on next week's for council.
For Annie to present for council.
Yes.
Cages, isn't it?
Uh, can I have a proposal to accept the new financial regs with those amendments, Chris, and send me that? Ron, all in agreement? Thank you. Seven, six, seven correspondence to note and consider any other correspondence?
Uh, yesterday, today I received a letter from the, the, uh, Small Audits, Audit Authority. I have to bring that to your attention. It's just setting up instructions for this coming year's audit, nothing else.
Okay. Seven, six, eight, action points. Just going to pick out any that, um, uh, it was touched on earlier, first one, town website is still being developed and policies are to be added to the website once the update has been completed. I might park that, because you've got a website on your agenda tomorrow.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so yeah, probably best not to go into that then. Uh, the finance officer to investigate the rates for the council chamber, this has now been investigated. The town council has been paying a disproportionate period of GW Stanforth charity business rates. Application is being made to have the business rate assessments revised. Has that progressed at all?
I heard a time to spend two hours on it today and I spoke to Agri Revenue Partnerships. Uh, they're happy to go back and revise all the rate assessments that I've undertaken to give them. The info, I've written the paper on it for that, so I've sent emailing the information through tomorrow morning.
Oh.
And they will then start the process. I've linked it up with, uh, our property agents, because they've got the exact dates in some of the agreements. And hopefully we should get a significant refund from Agri Revenue Partnership to the council. Because I'm mistaken, I thought GW Stanforth was actually, had been relieved of the responsibility, but it's actually the council. Most of it will come back to the trust.
Um, my significant might be different to your significant, but what's your significant?
Uh, we've been paying about £12,000 a year, I'd say, of the sales. So £6,000 from 2019 to now, I would classify.
Sounds like more.
Sounds like more participatory budgeting.
So that sounds significant to me, so I'm happy with that.
Actual results.
Yes, quite. Um, thank you for doing the work on that, Alan, I think that's, I know that's been a job of work sat waiting to be done. Um, the one that's probably relevant tonight, meter readings to be attained at the end of the financial year. So that's coming up and that's what we're poised to do though.
Do that.
Planning training in person is being approved. Derek mentioned the word Wetherspoons. Competitive quotes on credit card to be obtained to be timed with the expiry of the rental of the current credit card. When is the expiry period?
I think there's a few more months to go. The problem that we have is we have very cheap rental, rental agreements and, and slightly more expensive charges. Everyone else is offering very cheap charges, but very expensive rental agreements, so I just have to, of course.
Okay.
After nine twenty three will be adjusted.
Yeah.
First of all.
Um, two towers we can take off, because that has been done. The Act in Town Clerk to contact Job Centre Plus in respect of vacant space being, was that a useful process or?
Oh, I'll listen to this week.
That's a good point, actually. Uh, the Act in Town Clerk to ensure that the draft project's budget be taken to committees for more detailed discussions. And that has also been done. Seven, six, nine, community engagement. Um, we adopted a transformational budget and, and there hasn't been a single press release related to the budget. Um, and I'm slightly annoyed when I see people on Facebook saying, why is my town council, council tax gone up by nine percent? And what am I getting for it, which is a fair challenge. Um, so I suspect I should probably have to help the comms officer with some of the detail. But I would like to see some press releases related to what people are paying for. I mean, you know, we are, we have charged more, but we are delivering more as a result, so, um.
What I forgot to ask you, Paul, was your presentation to your council, but I think that's, that's, that was my mistake. If I had that, I could have done something.
Certainly the decisions we took around apprenticeships and additional funding for, uh, welfare support, you know, are quite newsworthy and those two things alone equate to the nine percent increase. So, let alone anything else.
Thinking, I think it's worth, uh, rather than putting it in percentage points, put it in real numbers. Because I think people look at nine percent, oh, it's twice as much as Norfolk County, but it's only a tiny fraction of Norfolk County.
Five percent increase for Norfolk's about sixty, seventy quid.
Yeah.
Nine percent increase to us is about extra twelve pound a year.
Yeah.
That's a problem with the percentages.
Worth pointing out that the majority of people on benefits, when you pay nine percent, in nine point one percent.
Well, it's only, it's only twelve pounds for a band E.
Yeah.
So even if you're not on benefits, a band A to C is less than twelve.
Yeah.
I think it's fourteen actually from.
I wouldn't get into that argument, because a lot of people pay nothing. Breckland insists on that nine percent.
Oh, yeah, but that is, but that, sorry, but that is the figure for.
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree, but.
But I think in cash terms, rather than nine percent, yes, I think that's brilliant, I, you know.
Yeah, good point.
It's clear for people to understand it, in balance and perspective.
Yeah, nine percent seems a lot, you know, four quid is not that.
It's clear.
Not nine percent and nothing is nothing, four percent is a lot, is a lot.
Yeah.
Seven, seven, zero, committee officers, update anything? Exclusion of press and public to consider resolving that pursuant to the public body's admissions to meetings act nineteen sixty, the press and public be excluded for any remaining items of business on the grounds that publicity would be prejudicial to the public interest by reason of the consequence of the nature of the business to be discussed. The two remaining items relate to personnel issues. Are members happy to exclude press and public?
Yes.
Yes.
Which in this case means turning off the recording.
Okay.
Isn't this my press and public to exclude? Just turn off the record.